Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one law, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Cecily, would you please read the online meeting rules?
Thank you to everyone who is joining us this evening. For those attending online, we have some instructions in case you are new to using Microsoft Teams. At the beginning of the meeting, please ensure that your microphone is muted and your camera is off. This helps us keep a strong internet connection during the meeting. At the top of your screen, you should see a row of icons. The one on the left is a chat bubble icon. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. You should see a text box pop up on the right side of your screen. In the chat, enter your name, address, and phone number, followed by the topic you wish to discuss. Sign up via chat will be permitted until the end of the consent agenda. If you wish to speak, please be sure to enter the requested information now. We will ask that in the interest of time, you do not repeat a previous speaker. Instead, state whether you agree or disagree with their point. Please wait to be acknowledged by the moderator for your turn to speak. Each person will be allotted three minutes or a modified amount of time at the discretion of the mayor. Please remain muted while others speak and for the duration of the meeting unless called upon. All meeting attendees, including those online, are expected to be respectful and courteous. The mayor retains the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in the city council rules. Thank you.
And now can you take roll call, please?
Counselor Richards? Counselor Sanchez?
Here.
Counselor Thorstad?
Here.
Counselor Trask?
Here.
Proton Muller?
Here.
Mayor Coleman?
Present.
Counselor Gorley?
Our counselors information, both Counselor Richards and Counselor Gorley have called in sick tonight, so I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse their absence. Cecily, can you call for the vote, please?
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Proton Muller?
Yes.
And Mayor Coleman?
Yes, let the record show that we have five eyes and two absent. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda with minutes from two different meetings.
So moved.
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes. Cecily, please take a vote.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Proton Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have five eyes and two absent. Moving on, recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions harvest festival chili cookoff proceeds award.
I am not actually sure if we have those folks present.
Okay. Well, then.
If you were present on that item, would you please raise your hand?
We will table it for the next meeting then. Okay. There is an individual who'd like to come forward, Alan Majors. Is that correct how you say your name? If so, now's the time to come forward. Please state your name and your address for the record. You come to this table here and there's a microphone there. Oh, okay. Oh, so he marked the wrong line. That's okay. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, request for council action approving an agreement for personal services with Markowitz Herbold, PC.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As presented in their packet is a agreement for personal services with Markowitz Herbold. As discussed previously, and it's, you've had an opportunity to review the agreement. I believe the city attorney has also, and myself, has also reviewed it. Robert, do you have any comments?
And so, we would be happy to take any questions you might have on that matter.
Any questions from counselors? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
So moved as recommended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Cecily, would you please take the vote?
Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Proton Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have five eyes and two absent to approve that. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, request for council action, apply applications for naming publicly owned facilities, pocket parks.
Okay, as the council is no doubt aware, we have a process for naming publicly owned facilities and property. We currently have some areas that have been designated as pocket parks that do not currently have names. Those are a, an area, 10th Avenue and Elm Street, and then another area, 12th Avenue and Nandina. The Park and Tree Committee has been active in selecting names for these, for these areas and has, is asking for approval.
Wally, would you please step forward?
You'll need to give your name and your address, but we might have some questions for you.
Good evening. I'm Wally Shreves. I live at 42220 Marks Ridge Drive, Sweet Home.
Thank you.
And to go over these two little parks, we've been working on this for almost four years, which seems crazy, but to actually get public comment on this, most people don't even know where these parks are, or that it's even a park. And the one at 10th and Elm actually looks like the other part of somebody's yard, and they don't want the park, so. We've spent a bunch of time, I've three different events that I worked to get public comment on the parks. We ran a Park and Tree Committee work meeting. Started on it by getting, we probably had 200, 250 park names, and everybody was to go through that list, and from that select down to four. From those four, we crossed over to see if we had anything that lined up. And from that, we continued the vote, and we finally came down to two park names. So on 10th and Elm, which is, 10th and Elm, we wanted, we'd like to call that walkabout park. A lot of people do a walkabout up there, and the idea is to put in a bench and a trash can there. It's a nice place to take a break. I actually went up there and sat there for two different mornings to try to gather name ideas from people which were part of our list. The other park at 12th and Nandina, the name we came upon was halfway park. It's, for the most part, it's halfway between North Side and Sankey, North Side and Strawberry. If you're down there in that area and you're walking up to Thriftway, it's about halfway. It's a little, Thriftway's a little closer to the park. You're going to Safeway, Safeway's just a little farther than parking down there. So the halfway park fit well. Same thing with putting in a bench for somebody to take a break on, and there has been a trash can there. All I noticed today, it wasn't there. So, those are our two recommendations for those two parks. Once we get the parks in, we'd like to put the sign up actually saying the name of the parks so they can be identified as a pocket. You look it up on Apple Maps, it actually shows them as pocket parks, but there's nothing else that said. What are your questions?
I think you've answered all of our questions. That was a very thorough report, Wally. Thank you so much, and thank you for your dedication to the Park and Tree Committee and all the efforts you take to do the research and get public comment on these things. Appreciate that.
So the procedure at this point is, should the council feel to approve this request, staff will then schedule a public hearing and advertise it for the community to weigh in on, on the naming of these parks.
Sounds good. Any questions from counselors? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the names of these pocket parks. Cecily, please take a vote.
Proton Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
I really don't like them. No, I'm kidding.
Yeah.
Let the record show that we have five eyes and two absences, and Counselor Trask serves on the Park and Tree Committee, so he had plenty of opportunities to speak into that. Thank you so much, Wally, for your time. It takes a long time. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, request for council action approving resolution number 35 for 2023 in support of establishing a continuum of care. There you are. Peggy, please come forward. Give your name and address for the record.
As I said, right now, we belong to the rural Oregon continuum of care. So this particular slide here that shows the HUD performance is like a rating and ranking report card that HUD has for each continuum of care. They want to know how many people became homeless in your area? How many people did you get out of homelessness? How many people fell back into homelessness after you helped them out of homelessness? Competitive at funding, but HUD applies this report card for the Rock to my score for the grant that I wrote, and says, oh, well, you wrote a really good grant, but you know what? Your report card is only showing that you all perform at kind of a C level, so we're going to downgrade you in this competition because of that. So if you'll move on to the next slide for me, please. This is a map that shows the rural Oregon continuum of care. HUD has continuously told us in Oregon, well, rural Oregon continuum of care, we have lots of balance of state continuums in the nation that are performing a what? Eyes, and who, who's doing a good job? Because I'd like to see how they're doing. Well, Connecticut. County alone serves the, it's geographically approximately the size of the state of Connecticut. Gray counties that you see on the map are existing. But she directly funding, directly allocated funding to the different specific continuums of care, and there was money associated with that. It was over $100 million. Jackson County, for example, got $8.8 million. Lynn Benton, Lincoln Counties, the region my agency serves, has a bigger population than Jackson County, and combined, we got less than $4 million total. Marion and Polk Counties got over $10 million directly allocated to them. And then after a hue and a cry and a lot of work by people like me at the legislature, House Bill 5019 got passed, and we were able to get $26 million carved out to be shared across the 26 counties. The governor has signaled her clear intent that she plans on sending money out in the future to address the issues of homelessness to continuums of care. And I see the writing on the wall. If we do not form our own tri-county continuum, we're going to continue to be lost in the shuffle in this 26-county continuum, and funding will be continued to be diverted to the more metro areas where they already have those existing structures of a continuum. If you'll move on, yeah, a little bit. Thank you. So we have a lot of things going on right now in Lynn County, and it is probably confusing, but I want to show you in this little Venn diagram of how they're all connected. So when we asked to be included in part of the Governor's Executive Order 2302, which you all were instrumental in making happen, that opt-in option of saying, hey, we want to be counted in that group, what we were told was, oh, we'll include you, but we're not going to give you any of that money that we set aside, but you have to do all this extra work. So they asked us to create a MAC group, a multi-agency coordinating group, which your mayor, Kelsey, a number of your folks participate in regularly. And then we got the House Bill $5019 that were associated with this, went to the MAC group, got passed through to Community Services Consortium to put out in the community. And so the MAC group and all the people that are at the table at the MAC group are exactly the people that we want as part of a continuum of care. And this work that's happening right now, we want to continue that momentum for that work and fold that into a tri-county continuum. We think we have everybody who needs to be at the table. We think we have the right brains talking about the right things, and we just want to keep that momentum going. So if you'll move on to the next slide, how does this fit with everything that's happening in the tri-county region? Prior to the executive order, there was House Bill 4123. Lincoln County and Benton County competed with other counties in the state, and they were awarded House Bill 4123 funding, $2 million each county to form a navigate homeless navigation center and to create a systemic plan to address homelessness. Then they're using their House Bill $5019 to kind of form a pilot to see if their theory about their strategy is going to work. Again, we want to roll all that together as part of the continuum of care and keep it moving forward. And learn what we, establish what we have already learned in those lessons and figure out better practices going forward. So if you'll advance one more slide, please. This map that I plagiarized from the Lincoln County Homeless Advisory Board Plan really is important for you to see because what they did was they mapped all of the people that were touching unhoused individuals in their community and saw how those, those groups interacted with one another. And that's the kind of work that will come out of having our own continuum of care, that we will do that kind of analytical work to make sure that we're not duplicating services and that we're having the greatest impact with the dollars that we have. So if you'll forward to another slide, this slide just really shows kind of the nature of all the work that's being done around homelessness by all the partners that are doing the work. Everything from street outreach to navigation to find housing, data collection, and as you know, with any kind of federal dollars or state dollars, you have to have data reporting. So that's happening. And then coordinated entry and assessment, figuring out the reality of who is homeless and what their needs are so that we can use those analytics to really determine specific case plans for the individuals and get them housed and keep them housed. Okay, next slide. I'm here tonight talking to you. I'm making the rounds of all the city councils in Lynn Benton and Lincoln Counties, asking for resolutions of support. I have to show HUD that I didn't just cook this up in my garage on my own, that I do have the support of the communities that I serve. And then I have a whole laundry list of things that I have to put together. We are very fortunate. Marion and Polk Counties pulled out of the Rock and did this before we did, and they worked with HUD. HUD had never done this before. It was the first in the nation to actually come out of a balance of state continuum and form a continuum of care on their own. And so now there's kind of a glide path for doing that, and Marion and Polk Counties have been very generous in sharing what that glide path looks like. So I know all the documents I have to put together, what the packet looks like, and I'm hoping to send that in at the end of this month so that, God willing, this time next year, we will be competing in the national competition as a tri-county region and not as part of the Rock. So the next thing is just if you have any questions, happy to answer any questions that you have, and/or also to let you know you have my contact information if you want to discuss this in more depth offline. Happy to talk to you about any of it.
Thank you, Peggy. Do we have any questions from counselors regarding this?
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
So thank you for bringing this to our attention and asking for us to support you in this. I'm curious, at the national level, when you're applying for a grant, if we are in a tri-county continuum, what's the, the dollar value that you're seeking and how would you split it between the three counties?
So, great question. It's not about the money, but it's always about the money. I don't know what this means financially. Frankly, I drug my feet a bit when I saw Marion and Polk had pulled out. They invited us to pull out with them. And I was concerned about losing money because there is that possibility, the way the funding works at HUD and the way the cycles work. And what I've watched is that as Marion and Polk have continued to move forward, they have been able to bring in an additional $2 million to their continuum of care. And as new funding becomes available, they make the decision whether they want to compete for that funding or not. In our situation, an example of that was Jackson Street Youth Services wanted to submit a runaway and homeless youth grant proposal to the national competition. And because the rest of the 26-county continuum didn't have the capacity to support that in every part of the continuum, Jackson Street was told, sorry, we're not going to put your grant proposal forward. This gives us a little more self-determination to pick and choose how we want to submit proposals. And you can assume that we'll be going after every dollar that we can find. Whether we'll be successful in the competition, no way to know that, but I think this gives us definitely movement forward to assume that we can bring more funding into the continuum.
Yes, one more. So you're the executive director of CSC. You're specifically talking about the homelessness issue and not the other people that you serve with your organization with this tri-county continuum?
Yes. So again, my agency does serve the three counties, and I forgot to answer part of your question, and I'll get back to that in just half a second. The continuum of care is very specifically about homelessness and housing, so it really is everything. It's a concept and it's a name. HUD coined the term, I believe, continuum of care, but it really is the concept of everything that touches people's housing from being, preventing them from becoming homeless, to supporting them if they're precariously housed, to getting them back into housing if they are unhoused, to building affordable housing. And you have everybody who's dealing with that in addition to the service providers that are providing the supportive services to keep people stabilized in their housing, and the funders and the municipalities that are making the regulations around housing. And so it really is a think tank in your community and a planning entity about housing and homelessness. CSC serves many other types of clients seeking other types of services. For example, Lynn Benton Food Share is one of our programs. We also do utility bill payment assistance. But this continuum of care concept is very specifically around housing and homelessness. And you had asked about the services. When we look at who we serve, about 50% of the clients we serve are from Lynn County. About 25% are each from Benton and Lincoln Counties. So depending upon what the specific grants are that we apply for, will determine which counties they're applied to, but generally, that's the formula that I have in my mind when I'm thinking about the work that we do.
Any other questions from counselors? Peggy, thank you so much for coming this evening, but I also want to thank you for the work that you've done to help us get funding in other areas. I appreciate the fight that you've had for the community of Sweet Home and the people that we have here, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And Mayor, I just want to say that you are a gem and a jewel. I wish that I could clone you and put you, look at this guy. I could clone you and put you in charge of every city council in the tri-county region because you are a champion about this issue and, and a role model for many.
Thank you so much, Peggy. Appreciate it. Any other questions from counselors or comments? Okay, so if there are no further questions, I'm open to a motion.
So moved as recommended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Cecily, will you please take the vote?
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes, and she is good.
Proton Muller?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have five eyes and two absences to approve the continuum of care. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is yeah, request for council action ordinance bill number 18 for 2023 zone map amendment.
So, Madam Mayor, this is a, a application for a zone map amendment. As such, it is a land use application, and so we will be having a, this is a public hearing for, for this matter. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning map in an area consisting of approximately 2.2, 2.02 acres. Locating in Sweet Home, the property in question is roughly at the intersection of 29th Avenue and Long. The zoning map is proposed to change from the residential low-density R1 zone to the residential high-density R3 zone. The proposed zone change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation. The Sweet Home Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on November 16th, 2023, and they received testimony. At that meeting, the planning commission approved the application and recommended that the city council approve it. And the Sweet Home Municipal Code requires that the council hold a public hearing and decide on this application. The Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan guides official policy decisions about development within the area. The plan aims to organize and coordinate complex interrelationships between people, land, resources, and facilities to meet the future needs of the citizens and to protect the livability of the community. The plan also reflects the public's goals and aspirations for Sweet Home and, and the best way to handle development and conservation in the city. The officially acknowledged comprehensive plan gives policy direction for land use decisions and coordinates private and public development. The Sweet Home Municipal Code provides criteria for zone map amendments such as this. The first criteria is that the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. The second criteria is that the proposed amendment is orderly and timely, considering the pattern of development in the area surrounding land uses and any changes which may have occurred in the neighborhood or community to warrant the proposed amendment. The third criteria is that utilities and services can be efficiently provided to serve the proposed uses or other potential uses in this proposed zone. And finally, the proposed amendment to, the map is consistent with Oregon statewide planning goals. I'll just read through the staff, staff report on what staff found. So regarding the, the first criteria, the proposed zone is appropriate for the comprehensive plan use designation on the property and is consistent with the description and policies for the applicable comprehensive plan land use classification. Staff findings are that the subject property has a comprehensive plan designation of residential high-density R3. The Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from the residential low-density R1 zone to this residential high-density R3 zone. The proposed zone change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation and is consistent with the description and policies of the R3 zones. The second criteria is that the use is permitted in the proposed zone can be accommodated on the proposed site without exceeding its physical capacity. The use is permitted in Sweet Home Municipal Code, chapter 17.14, can be accommodated on the subject property without exceeding its physical capacity. The subject property is approximately 88,577 square feet. That's 2.02 acres. The R3 zone density requirements for single-family attached or detached homes and duplexes are no more than one residential structure per lot or parcel, other than an approved accessory dwelling unit, a maximum of 12 dwelling units per net acre. The R3 density requirements for multifamily is a maximum of 28 units per net acre. Based on that information, staff finds that the application complies with that criterion. The next criterion is that the allowed uses in the proposed zone can be established in compliance with the development required, requirements in the development code. Um, staff findings are that all development in the R3 zone comply, shall comply with the applicable provisions of the development code. Um, and those are A, off-street parking, um, B, signs, C, fencing, D, landscaping, E, yards and lots, F, other. All of those matters, depending on what the proposed development is, um, can be accommodated on this property with its size. Another criteria is that adequate public facilities, services, and transportation networks are in place or, or are planned to prove up or are planned to be provided concurrently with the development of the property. Uh, the zone change would bring this uh, zoning, uh, hold on. The Sweet Home Infrastructure Map and Local Wetland Inventory Map show that there is a wetland and stormwater drainage uh, identified that flows through the northeast corner of the subject property and then south along the east property line. Uh, the infrastructure map also shows a second stormwater drainage running from Long Street to 22nd Avenue. And then there are public facilities, uh, services and transportation networks uh, around the property that would serve water, wastewater, and transportation. It is well-served by our, our city infrastructure and any future development would either enlarge those connections to service uh, any proposed development or would expand what we have in place already. And so the, that staff has found that that criterion is satisfied. Uh, the next criterion is that for residential zone changes, the criteria listed in the purpose statement for the proposed residential zone shall be met. Uh, the proposed residential zone is the R3 zone. And the purpose of that, our, that zone is to provide areas suitable and desirable for high-density residential development, particularly for apartments, but where other types of residential and related public services, service uses are appropriate. The R3 zone is most appropriate in areas which have been developed for high-density residential use or which are suitable for such use due to proximity to downtown Sweet Home and to highway-related commercial areas inside the city. This particular um, property is on a minor arterial road. Long Street is uh, the, the second um, most important uh, road in Sweet Home. And that is one of the reasons why the comprehensive plan has high-density residential along that road. Just to uh, also make you aware or remind you, this application is only for the zone change. We have not received any proposed um, actual development. No building permits have been submitted, and we have not had um, any word of exactly what type of housing the applicant wishes to construct. The R3 zone provides a wide variety of housing types, including apartments, but also including townhomes and duplexes and cottage clusters. So there, we don't know exactly what it would be, but there's a wide variety of possibilities. Finally, uh, just to conclude my staff report, any um, any uh, comments or any determination to um, to approve this, this application or deny it must fit within the criteria that are in our code. And so some items may be brought up um, that are, are valid and reasonable, but they're not something that um, we can uh, focus on. For example, our development code does not go into property value at all. It's not one of the criteria in our code. And nor does any development code in the state of Oregon, to my knowledge, use property values as a um, a determining factor. And so if that, if there was a reason such as that, um, that was a reason for uh, denial or approval for that matter, that would be subject to appeal uh, to the land use board of appeals. So we do need to focus on the, on the criteria. And that concludes my staff report. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to take those.
Thank you for the staff report. I need to ask um, city counselors the following. Does anyone have conflict of interest, ex parte information, or personal bias? Counselor Thorstad? Counselor Trask?
No.
Counselor Muller?
No.
Counselor Sanchez?
No.
And I do not either. Thank you. Okay, now it's time for testimony from those in favor or support of the application. Anybody want to come forward? If so, I need your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Laura LaRocque. I'm with UDL Engineering, addresses 63 East Ash Street in Lebanon. I am the applicant's representative tonight. Uh, the applicant and owner of the property is 4L Ventures LLC and Evan Vladimir. So as staff presented, the application before you is for a zone map amendment. And I'll try not to repeat everything that Blair just said in the essence of time. Um, but I will point out some things that I feel are pertinent to the application. So at the higher level, um, you have a comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, as you're probably aware, outlines policies and goals for the direction of the Sweet Home community. Uh, the zone map is a separate map in itself, and what it regulates is what you could actually go into the permit counter and apply for development. And it would talk about how developments would be in terms of setbacks, lot size, um, distances, heights, things of that nature. So today, the application before you has a comprehensive plan map designation of high-density residential. So the goal of the Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan is to accommodate what the projected growth is for the community. Uh, the comprehensive plan was reviewed recently and updated based on housing need projections for the community. The zone map amendment, the application before you um, actually is to bring the zoning designation of the property in alignment with the comprehensive plan so that development could occur on the property uh, in line with what the goals and policy of Sweet Home are for higher-density residential development. Um, as Blair outlined, there's five different review criterias that are considered in um, approving these application types. Uh, the first one is pretty simple. It just says, does a zone map amendment request, um, isn't in line with the comprehensive plan? As I just mentioned, this one is, um, the zone comprehensive plan designation is high-density residential. The zoning map amendment recommendation or proposal is for the same. So the review, the second review criteria talks about the uses permitted in the zone that is proposed can be accommodated without exceeding physical capacity. So as Blair mentioned, there's an array of residential uses that are permitted in the zone that is proposed. That includes anything from single-family housing, attached duplex cottage clusters up to multifamily development. Uh, on this particular parcel, it is of sufficient size and area to accommodate any number of those uses. The third re- review criteria just talks about when uses, um, if uses were to be developed on the property, could they be constructed in a way that meets the development code? Development code, uh, as I mentioned earlier, sets out things that say this is the use that's permitted, this is the size lot that needs to be created, this is the side road that needs to serve those future lots, um, and so on. And as I mentioned, just due to the property's size, configuration, access to public streets and public utilities, uh, we don't foresee any um, issues that would arise to accommodate any of the uses that are permitted within that zone. The fourth review criteria just talks about, is there adequate public facilities? So in this case, it's saying if you were to come in with a subdivision proposal based on the future or the zone that's proposed today, is there adequate availability of public water, sewer, um, for the streets to be able to accommodate additional traffic? Uh, on this particular one, the property has street frontage along 29th Avenue and also Long. Those provide adequate street frontage and access to the site. Uh, there's also public utilities for storm sewer and um, storm sewer water along both of those frontages as well. Uh, any future development on the site would require extensions of those public facilities to serve whatever's proposed. There's nothing in the city's master plans for any of those public facilities that would talk about um, inadequacy of the ability to, to accommodate future development. The last review criteria just talks about um, for the residential zone change, the criteria listed the purpose statement. So it's essentially just saying if the zone map amendment was approved, would it achieve the purpose that's set out for that zone? Uh, the purpose is a pretty broad statement, but it just essentially says that high density is encouraged within that zone. Uh, density is a combination of either number of units or allowing smaller lots that, so more units can be developed on a property um, of the same size. So we feel that, again, due to the site's size, configuration, proximity to downtown Sweet Home, um, that the density provisions could be fulfilled in that as well. So I'll wrap up my presentation, turn it over to the commission, see if you have any questions.
Thank you so much for being here and for your presentation.
Madam Mayor, if I may, um, so there's a creek behind that property. Is that not true?
There are some natural features. Yeah.
Yes, so I guess a little bit of concern for me was against high water. How far away is it going to be? You're going to build a wall? How's it going to keep it from flooding on there? Uh, because it does flow pretty hard. And it's, you know, it rains once in a while here. And so, uh, and, and then, uh, so that, that would be a concern, but I don't think it's impossible. Uh, is there any plan that the guy has or the person has that, what kind of homes are going to put in there? Or is that not done yet?
Um, so to answer your first question, that, that really comes down a little bit later in the development process. Um, so first we want to identify what uses are permitted, and then the designing will occur for the site to make sure that we can meet things like distances from any sort of wetland features or natural resources. Uh, to answer the second question, there is no concept plan for this site. Um, the zoning does allow for residential. There's a number of different housing types that are needed that have been identified as needed for the city of Sweet Home. But we haven't narrowed that down to say which, yeah, but the next phase is um, once the zone map amendment is approved, um, things like a wetland delineation would occur. And then site planning would occur to make sure that we provide enough buffer to avoid any sort of flooding issues and things of that nature.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Not really a question. The only, I, little concern I have is the apartments complex being developed nearby in the school district nearby and what the traffic plan is going to be for that area. I see a little bit too much congestion.
So the, I can say that the Sweet Home Development Code does have um, some triggers for a transportation impact analysis, which is just essentially a study to say, can whatever proposed, can the number of trips to and from the site be accommodated on the future streets? So at the time a development proposal is submitted, the city will review that. There's some actual numbers that you're going to fix to that to say a lot that's intended for a single-family development would produce X amount of trips, vehicle trips to the site. And then they would calculate those to make sure that the, there's adequate street that's already built for that and that that would not exceed the capacity of the streets that are built within that area. Uh, in terms of school district, that's um, again, more of a development question. What we're asking for today is a zone map amendment. Development may or may not occur. I mean, there's properties that have been zoned high-density residential for many, many years that have not developed. So um, that comes down to a timing issue as well. But I can tell you from my experience with submitting development proposals, those are, notices are sent to the school district. They do have an opportunity to submit comments. Um, if there are concerns, and there's lots of opportunities to address those at the planning stage.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, if I may. That was also my concern because children were um, swapped schools when we built additional complexes on Long Street. And so the impact to the kids for multifamily housing, depending on how many units are going to be built, is a very big concern to me, especially as close to Hawthorne School as it is. Can somebody answer me the 88,000 square feet, how that relates to acreage? Because we can put 24 units per acre.
So the property is approximately 2.02 acres.
So potentially upwards of 48?
Minimum standard, correct?
For the number of units?
Yeah.
I believe that's maximum.
Maximum.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there, we can double check that, but the code does not require a minimum number of housing. It just says you cannot exceed. But when you're looking at number of units, um, typically you don't get to that do not exceed number because there's going to be large portions of the property that are going to be encumbered by public street development, sidewalks, utilities. Um, and when you start deducting those areas plus setbacks that are required for distances from front yards and interior yards, um, the number of units that you can actually produce on a two-acre lot would be a lot less than if you just did a straight two acres times whatever that um, maximum threshold is.
I mean, you could build up.
Yeah, you could build up.
We do have height restrictions as well. Um, the ones on uh, the, the recently constructed apartments that you mentioned on Long Street are three-story, I believe. And that is, that is the maximum height um, that we allow in the, in the R3 zone.
We're outside.
You can't go higher.
The school jurisdiction, but that is my concern. And then also the traffic safety plan would be really important to me because the more multifamily housing we have on that street, the more dangerous it is for the kids at the school and the congestion and all of that. That's my concern.
Again, I guess I just remind the council that it is a zone map amendment. It's not specific to a development proposal. So when we talk about a zone map, the applicant could come back and build one single-family home, and that could be what the development proposal is. Um, or they could do a higher-density sort of development. Right now that the focus is to say, does the zone map request match what the comprehensive plan policies and provisions say? Based on housing needs analysis, the comprehensive plan says we need more land available to do more residential development. And this is one property that's been identified as a place that would be a good fit within the community because it does have adequate road frontages along the, the property, does have adequate utilities that serve it. I would imagine that the school district was involved in the comprehensive plan map amendments that were conducted recently. Um, and again, the school district will be involved at, at the point when a development plan is before them. And if there's concerns, you can, there's many things that you can do based development. You might look at number of units, um, all sorts of things when you get down to the development phase to address some of those concerns that you might have for school or transportation.
I hear what you're saying to me. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Okay, testimony from those in opposition to the application? Please state your name and address for the record.
President of that area, just would like to state that I would like to preserve the continuity of our neighborhood and not have a zone change. And from there, I'm going to go to um, the agenda, commission agenda, page eight. Refers to access the subject property as frontage along Long Street and 29th Avenue. And I'm looking at the map, and I noticed that, that the long, Long Street that is owned by the city, if I'm correct. And so any easement for entry onto that property would put all that traffic onto 29th, to my understanding. As far as services, um, such as um, city water and sewer. Talking about water, I think would be beating a dead horse, so I'll continue on to, um, because I, we already know we have water issues. As far as sewer, I've come across a KZI 9 News report back in March 3rd where Sweet Home received a fine for $22,000 from environmental quality as a result of dumping sewage into the river. And to make it short, according to officials, our current uh, our current sewage plant is only designed for 3,500 people. I looked up our, our population to date and it's 10,156. This raises a concern to me for high-density property. The next, the next topic that I would like to bring up still on page, page eight, notice was provided to require, by required by Sweet Home Municipal Code. And I see that um, notices did go out, but I, I don't see any feedback from Sweet Home Police Department or any notices sent to the school district in regards to this zone change. I see no feedback from that. This kind of concerns me because it is quite an impact, not only on all of our agencies, police department, but mainly my concern is the school down the street. If it's, if we rezone this, what kind of impact is this going to have on the schools? And why wasn't our, our schools notified? I see that there's feedback from Public Works and the Fire Department. They are kind of vague, which is kind of, uh, kind of disappointed in that, but um, going on, analysis development code criteria, uh, 17.128. going on, analysis development code criteria, 17.128. Agency referrals goes back to that again. I don't, still don't see any police or school district feedback for the analysis. This is page 16, sorry, and going on page 16, section three, review criteria. Adequate public facilities, services, transportation networks. I just don't feel that we're meeting that criteria. As we go back to our schools, public libraries, fire department. I just, I think we're getting the cart before the horse on, on the high rezoning for high density. I think we need to get our infrastructure up and running a little bit better. And, and once again, I would like to keep our neighborhood intact with how it's going now. I feel that high density zone divides communities by putting apartments between stick built homes. Going on to page 19, 4.1, Sweet Home Transportation Plan. I looked up the Sweet Home Transportation Plan and it's dated 2003. Well, this is, this is 20 years old. But I look at the comprehensive plan map and it's dated 2022. So that's, that's not very comparative. And by looking at the State of Oregon Transportation Plan Guidelines, planning documents, TSP should be updated periodically to reflect growth. That doesn't seem to be very periodic to me when you have a plan that's 20 years old. Continuing on the, just Sweet Home Municipal Code, the traffic impact study. When traffic impact analysis is required, a change of zoning, planning and designation increase site traffic, which we know that will definitely be an increase of peak hour volume and existing proposed approaches and access to meet minimum spacing and site distance. And number seven, a change in initial traffic patterns that may cause safety concerns. And that's my big one right there, because I live on the corner and I see all these kids and parents parking there on the corners, dropping their kids off so they can go to school. That is going to be well over the 20%. So I would, I just would encourage the, our council to really look this over strongly for the folks that live in this neighborhood. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming. Alan, if this is when you wanted to speak, please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
Alan Majors, I live at 3107 Long Street. It's next to the property. I work for Hawthorne Elementary and as we stated, it was, we just red designated the lines two years ago. And that's because of a couple apartment buildings being set up. There's also on Clark Mill Road, which is just south of that or north of that section a little bit, that was red designated for R3 recently also. Now, the developer says, oh, we don't have any plans, but if it's designated R3, then they can set up apartments. And it's 28 apartments per acre, so 56 units total possible there. And I, I watch the kids, I'm the, I'm the crossing guard out there. So I'm watching all those kids go by that corner and having them pass by another potential 56 windows, people I don't know, watching my kids go by every morning, every night, not to mention the traffic there. Yeah, there's not a frontage on Long Street. That is, that's a city easement, it's designated 6,800. So, and it's, it's where that creek is, I was told they did that so that it's a dangerous, it's too dangerous for him to have easement onto Long Street at that point. So they're all going to be going on to 29th right there, and that's a little wind, a little bend right there. It's just way too dangerous to have that much traffic coming out of there. They're giving us this song and dance of, well, you know, we haven't made the plan yet and we've got to have it zoned this way. Most of what they can do, they can do without having it rezoned. Townhouses, the duplexes can go on there, that's fine. If you're going to rezone it, I strongly suggest that you wait to see what their plan is. I can, I understand change is going to happen and those little woods are going to be cut down. This is development. But we can control some of the change, change is not always good. Our skies used to be full of ducks and geese and the rivers were full of fish. And they're not anymore, we can control the change a little bit more by allowing just stick that houses to be put there. Wait for them to give their development plan, I know they don't have to legally, because there's big money involved in them setting up those plans, but anything but apartments there. It's going to cause such an impact on our school. A lady in the other side, oh, we need more room for low income children to have access. Well, good portion of our student body is already low income children. And if we throw another 56 units in there, most likely potentially low income housing. We're going to take away from the services of the children that we already help. And we're going to be depriving the children that would be coming in for the services that would have been there because we're going to be overstressed before we put in any more apartment buildings. I strongly suggest we build at least another building or put another school up somewhere, because as fast as you guys are putting up apartments in the city, we're running out of rooms in our schools, our, our school rooms are already very full. And I just don't see where we're going to be putting another 58 families worth of children. Well, please think about that, I'm not against it being changed. I am against it being an apartment, anything but apartments.
Thank you for coming. All right, testimony from those neither in support or opposition. I'm going to close this public.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
Our best practice among the, in the planning commission is to offer the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal to address any of the concerns brought up by the comments.
I'd welcome.
We usually give that option.
Yep, if she would like to come forward with a rebuttal.
Thank you again, Laura Larratt, for the record. I guess I'll just touch on a few things, so the first gentleman that spoke out, he was talking about transportation concerns and the need for a transportation impact study. I will point out that there's findings that's included on UDL's submitted under criterion D. We actually look at the state regulation that talks about if transportation studies are required and when for zone changes. And the state regulation outlines that when zone map amendments that are consistent with the comprehensive plan. And they haven't acknowledged transportation system plan in place. And there's one other criterion for this, it's within an urban growth boundary and a transportation study is not required because they do defer to the city's local transportation system plan in those instances. In terms of notice, one of the comments was talking about notice radiuses and having agencies and outside representatives receive notice applications. It's my understanding that it's pretty common practice for the city planning staff to provide notice to, to those representatives. And the stated notice radius within the development code outlines the boundaries of those notices. In terms of public facilities, water, sewer, storm. Again, there's really two opportunities to look at to make sure that those systems, public facilities are adequate for zone map amendments and also future development. One stage is when you're looking at comprehensive plan amendments and there's at the zone map amendment application. And then the third and probably the most final is when you have a development proposal in front of you. At the development proposal stage, you can actually see what development is going to be proposed on the site, what their needs are. And there can be analysis done at that point in time. If there's any constraints to any public facilities, they can put development restrictions on property at that stage. So if there's any concerns about perhaps that the, the plans are outdated or that more information is needed. Again, these are items that are commonly reviewed at the development permit stage or land use review for subdivision proposals to see if there's any sort of restrictions that are needed to be placed on development. I think I have addressed concerns that are raised, but is there any other items that were brought up that you have questions about now?
No, yeah, okay.
Great, thank you again for your time.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so I will now close this public hearing at 7:32. Moving on to the next item for this process is city council discussion deliberation. Director Larson, do you have some updates on regarding a transportation system plan?
We are in the midst of a transportation system plan update. We just had a meeting last week actually about it. And so the that, that, the commenter was correct, it is something that needs to be reviewed on a regular basis and we were doing that. The various updates to the comprehensive plan are a little bit. There's, there's some nuance there, the comprehensive plan was last put in place in 2001. And then we see some later dates when it was amended in various ways. So it's been, it does need to be reviewed, to do a full review. And, and we recently applied for a grant to do that, but unfortunately did not receive funding for that project. However, in the last year, we did do a housing needs analysis study. And that included some amendments to the housing portion of the comprehensive plan. And it also included a look at our, our buildable lands inventory and what we have when it comes to preparing to to accommodate the housing that is needed in our community. The changes that were made to the comprehensive plan through that process were not, were to support, essentially support more density is what those changes support. And that was a publicly reviewed document with, with associated public hearings. The so where things stand with, with those plans is that they, they have, they have been updated and are continuing to be updated. It is likely that in the new transportation system plan, Long Street will continue to be a minor arterial. If anything, it would be beefed up more to handle the growth, the future growth that we expect in our community. Because it is vitally important to have another arterial that can complement Main Street and be that larger road to serve both emergency services, but also in case of, should anything occur on Main Street that requires a detour and so forth. And so Long Street is well situated for that. I will make one comment regarding the frontage on Long Street. The commenter is correct, there is a strip of land, this is something that we didn't realize at first because it's such a small piece. There's a stretch, strip of land along Long Street between the subject property and Long. And the reason that was, that that's owned by the city is, it was I don't know the, the exact details, but it is, it's tied in with the development of Long Street. If you're familiar with that area, there is a, a bridge over that creek. And with the way the sidewalks are constructed and the topography in that area, it's really not wise to have access directly onto Long very close to that bridge. Because you want to ensure that it's a safe crossing and especially safe for pedestrians. And so the reason that strip of land is owned by the city is so that the city has control. If it was not, if that strip was not owned by the city, then we wouldn't have the ability to refuse access onto Long. But because it's our property, then we have a bit more control over the situation. And so any use of that property, whether it be, I mean, there could conceivably be some sort of of driveway constructed through there with the city's cooperation. The only way we would give such cooperation is if there were, there was a lot of data supporting the safety and the, and the necessity of, of frontage of a driveway onto Long Street. So that, that is certainly something that could be looked at through development plans. But it would require a lot of, of information to justify city cooperation for that.
Within our development code, is there anything that would address the safety concerns that people were bringing up?
So there's, there's a couple of things that I heard regarding safety. The first was traffic related, and then the second was based on the type of housing. There, and Chief Ogden might be able to chime in on this, I, I don't know of any data that suggests that one type of housing is more dangerous than another type of housing. Certainly some house, some types of housing may have, are, are the only option for folks who can't afford a home. But however, there's also plenty of people who could afford a home that choose instead to rent or choose instead to have an apartment where they wouldn't have to take care of a yard. There are a variety of reasons that people choose to choose the types of housing that they live in. And I don't know that any of them indicate that one is more dangerous than another. There certainly is higher, higher density does mean more people. And, and that must be managed. And, and so that, that's where the transportation piece connects. When it comes to the transportation, like I said, Long Street is a minor arterial. So it, it's supposed to be designed to, to eventually the, the, to handle that flow of traffic. Depending on what development is proposed, it may, like the applicant said, it may trigger a, a transportation system or a transportation needs analysis to, to look at how the proposed use would affect the area. What that would likely mean is triggering some sort of signalization or changes to the intersection that would make it capable of, of meeting the traffic that would go through there. When it comes to higher density housing, they typically locate and they're typically planned to be along major transportation routes. And that way, the, the, the need for transportation can be addressed. And that's frankly, the, the safest way to, to handle apartment buildings is to have them along those transportation corridors. When it comes to the safety of children walking there, certainly we would want that to be safe. Any development of this property would also include development of sidewalks where that corner currently doesn't have any. And so that by itself will actually increase the safety. There's also, you know, like I said, with the frontage on, on Long Street, while the city would probably be very resistant to having some sort of driveway through our property, we would be very open to and, and encourage pedestrian connections across that property. Because that would enable any students from that, if there's an apartment building put in. And again, we don't know what kind of development it would be. But any students that live there or that come through that area would have a pedestrian connection through the property. You know, anyone that lives on that property would be able to go directly to Long, wouldn't have to go to an intersection with a stop sign where they would interact with cars. They could go directly onto the sidewalk and get over to Hawthorne without needing to cross any streets at all. And so ideally, when you're talking about the safety of kids walking to school, keeping them from that contact with the vehicles is paramount and is the, the most important way to guard their safety. So improved sidewalks would be a part of any development application that we receive for this property. Chief, did you have any data on apartments?
Madam Mayor, just real quick, Blair, well, looking at our council agenda, was there a proper notification of this public hearing submitted?
Yes.
Because I didn't see it, the agenda.
Yes, it was a, we don't always, and I forgive the oversight, we, we have copies that I can supply. If they were not included in your packet, it's not for, it's not because they weren't done. It's more of an oversight of, of providing you a copy of that, but I can provide those to you. And we, one, one other thing on the notice. When it comes to our report and it shows the comments from various agencies, if there's no comment listed from an agency, it doesn't mean they didn't receive notice. It just means that it didn't provide us with any comment. And so we, we do provide notices to the school district, we provide notices of course to, to throughout the city. And those, the, the notices are also, you know, printed on our website and et cetera. We, we make a great effort to let people know what's going on. We can't force people to give us comments to include in our staff report. We focus on the ones that affect building the most, which are typically the fire district and the city public works and engineering. But we, we don't typically receive much from the school district when it comes to these applications. Although we do coordinate with them when we have actual building up.
Although we do coordinate with them when we have actual building applications as we have with the various apartment buildings and subdivisions that have been constructed.
So just for a review for some that may not know, our comprehensive plan, again, you said was written in what year?
I believe 2001.
2001.
It's been modified a couple of times since then.
And the area that we're discussing right now is discussing a zone change to have our zone map match with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is why are we, why would we want to have the zone map comply with that?
So the comprehensive plan and the zone map kind of work hand in hand. Comprehensive plan is where you want to eventually be, and the zone map is where you are right now. Because when we change the comprehensive plan, when we, you know, suppose you have an area that you see significant growth is likely to come to that area. The city and and there's a public process of determining what the comprehensive plan map designation for that area should be. And any review of the comprehensive plan should include looking at whether you have those designations in the right place. And so we go ahead and change the comprehensive plan. Well, all of those properties, the people who own those properties, they bought them or may have bought them or are continuing to live in them with the expectation of a certain zone, a certain type of development on those properties. And so if you have an owner that has a bare lot and and it's zone residential, but your comprehensive plan designation for that area is commercial, you don't immediately change it to commercial for them because that property owner has rights. And they have a right to that designation for the property. And we can't go ahead and change that and remove their rights because that's essentially a taking and unconstitutional. And so we we have comprehensive plans as an option, as a way to shape that development. And so you change the comprehensive plan designation for a property. As the property changes hands, as people develop differently, they see that option of, well, right now it's zone residential, but I see that commercial is an option for me and I can make more money building, you know, whatever is allowed in the commercial zone. With this particular property, it's the same way. That property owner that owns it knows that it's zoned R1 currently, has a right to that. But also, it's been designated as as high density residential in the comprehensive plan for over 20 years. And we don't know if someone has purchased that property on reliance of that comprehensive plan designation. It's been attached to that property for a long time. And so they have, they do have rights to to that. And this this interplay between the zone map and the comprehensive plan map are is designed to accomplish that.
I have one more question, and that has to do with once we've discussed this and if this gets approved, the development portion of that, you mentioned that there will be communication with the school district. And there's a process for that. Is there a a public process or any input regarding that once development comes, or is this just between school district and city?
We we communicate regularly with the school district on a variety of matters, and this would be included in that. It's not, certainly if someone wanted to put it in a public records request, they could have all the communication that we engage in and get a copy of that. We don't typically send that out to anyone else because there's usually not a need. It's mostly just coordination with the school district to let them know what's going on and 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 resolve any concerns that they might have. Sometimes they do have concerns about phasing and things like that. And we have talked with developers in the past about what the what the pace of their development is likely to be. Given today's climate of interest rates, it's slow and difficult to know when it would speed up. But that is, that is essentially interagency communication that usually there's not a public requirement. We don't go through. We don't have, we don't have any other notice that we put out when we engage in that. But we're happy to provide copies if somebody wants to know.
I I did say that was my last question, but I'm, I actually have one more, so sorry. So if we were to deny a zone change tonight, what are legal ramifications regarding that, since our comprehensive plan has been in place for over 20 years with an R3 designation?
It all goes back to the criteria that we use to to approve zone map amendments. And if it it all goes to the record of this meeting and any other meetings that have taken place on this particular application. If if applicant, if it's denied and the applicant appeals to the Land Use Board of Appeals, they're going to look at the record of what we've discussed here tonight and what the Planning Commission discussed previously at the last public hearing for this application. If the reasons for denial are something that's not one of the criteria, then that would be certainly be grounds for an appeal. If the reasons for denial are one of the criteria, but the data behind it is not accurate, that would also be grounds for appeal. And so it's important to look at what's supporting, what the reasons are and what is the data that's supporting that decision.
Thank you. So as we move on.
I've got a couple of questions.
I was going to ask you if you have questions. Go ahead.
Greg, can we give enough water for those? If there's 40, 50 of them, can we, can we handle the water?
Minus the event that we're currently under, the plant is can produce 6 million gallons per day. We generally produce about a million a gate on average, sometimes a little over, and especially in the summer, but sometimes under. So yes, we have enough capacity that we can make at the treatment plant.
And the wastewater plant, it's a different story. We know that. Now you did a project that was going to help that problem that we had with the overflows. Is that not true?
Yeah, so we have full design of the wastewater plant right now, and we have are seeking funding through WIFIA and other agencies. We recently, as as the end of October, received that letter from that agency inviting us to come and full apply for that funding, which we would receive up to 80% of this project. And so we're pretty excited about that because it means this project can go forward. The interim project that we just completed as of today, as a matter of fact, the screw press with the sledge blend tank, it was actually started up and we are actually utilizing it. So that will help with solids removal at the plant. Now, the construction of the new plant is what's going to cause the end of those SSOs at the headworks. And that's where they've been coming from in the last two heavy rain events. And the reason those SSOs occur is because the current plant path, plant capacity at seven MGD or million gallons per day, we can bring that much in, but anything over that seven MGD, that little spike at the top then goes out the outfall at Ames Creek, which is a second discharge point. And so in the last two heavy rain events, when we get these monsoonal three, four inches over two, three days, that's typically when we get in those events. Last year, we had one event. This year, we've already had two, and they're two weeks apart. The new plant capacity for the influent pump station and the current outfall that we're finishing design on going into San Yum River is going to open up 12.4 MGD. Scheduling through finance and everything, we would probably break ground this next summer with the hopes to complete that project in three years.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, if I may, so what I think I hear everybody saying is we as a council don't have the right to devalue this landowner's private property by refusing their zone change, which is allowable by the comprehensive plan?
Whether you have the right to or not, well, so I I would answer that by saying the decision is yours. You need to determine what is the data supporting that decision. And be aware that whatever reasoning you may have is subject to appeal. Now, if the property owner feels that the the decision was made improperly or that the data on which that decision relied is is faulty, they certainly would have grounds for appeal. But it all goes back to, do you feel that the data support? The data that that's particularly are regarding the criteria that we discussed that you can, that that can be used for for making this decision? If that data, that's what you need to base it on. So I don't know if that answers your question.
I have a second one.
Yes.
So we do have the right to work with the developer on what we can allow them to construct and designate or build or whatever to what for what we want as well.
Sure. So the way that we shape what developers do on a property is through our development code that we updated last year. And so that development code determines these are the types of uses that are allowed in these zones. And this is how dense they can be. This is how far back from the road or from other property lines that they have to be and so forth. So all of those rules dictating those those properties. For example, you you've, I'm sure you've noticed when you drive down the street on a particular street that all the houses seem to be right in a in a line. Well, the reason isn't because they decided to cooperate. The reason is because that's a setback line, and that's as close to the road as they were allowed to go so that they could have the biggest backyard possible. That's how, that's how our development code works is we put in regulations like that and it results in that look and feel of a community or it results in the number of units, a number of that, the amount of density that you have in a given area. So the the request is to change the zone. Once that request is granted, it goes back to that development code of what is allowed and how dense can it be? And so we don't, we don't negotiate with with developers specifically on what they're going to build because it's all dictated already in the code. Now, if they're trying to do something super unusual, they can do what's called a planned development, and that's that kind of, you know, gives some flexibility with some of those rules. And that's, you can kind of negotiate some of that. But it's not, this, that's not quite the same. Now, when it, when it comes to building code, that's completely up to this, up to state building code and and what's permitted when it comes to the the structure, how things are built and the safety of it. But that, the density, the types of uses, the setbacks, that kind of thing, those are all in our development code.
Lastly, you were stating that the city and the school district work in cooperation and not a lot of people normally hear about how that goes about. And so my last concern is the parents are the last to hear and the students are the last to hear because they're the ones that have to deal with these type of transitions. So I just want them to be aware of what's going on too and have opportunity to input how they feel about their kids potentially being relocated to different schools.
So we don't have much, we cooperate with the school district when it comes to letting them know what applications we've received and making sure they have an opportunity to comment on on things such as this. When it comes to how boundaries are changed in the future, that is completely an internal issue within the school district that we'd have very little input on. It's it's, they're the experts on how to serve, how to serve properties when with educational services. That's, that's not an area that we can really get into. Now, we do try to, we include them, for example, in our transportation system plan update. The school district has been invited and and to be a part of that, the public advisory committees that are associated with that. So we home transportation's been invited to be a part of that. So because transportation obviously affects us all, but it affects the school district in particular with busing and and getting kids to and from school. That is one of the prime ways that the school district works with us to make sure that they are prepared when it comes to the the growth of the city and how how they're, how you know, which school handles which children.
Any other questions from councillors? Seeing no other questions, there's a recommendation before the council. Let me know if there's a motion.
Still moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of second.
I do need to make one comment that a tie vote or the absence of a vote results in denial of the application, which is also subject to appeal. So one way or the or another, a decision is made and
still unless there is another motion coming, I shall move on to the next item on the agenda. So I guess the motion.
Is there any, are there any other questions that staff can answer regarding the application? Or is there more research that should be done that would allow the item to be tabled and brought back? So if there's, if I could get some direction on how you would like me to handle it, I'd be happy to.
I have a question. So all the properties that are around that lot, if it were to put into high density, what would that do to the value of the houses around it?
We don't have any. We don't have any accurate way of predicting what property values will become because there's a lot of factors that go into how much property is worth. No, most notably is how much someone is willing to pay for it. Usually in, when it comes to areas where denser pop, denser development is allowed, which this property is surrounded by properties that are similarly situated, that they could also be have the zone change to a higher density. Those properties tend to be more sought after by developers to that are looking to build and create a denser environment and build more homes. And so from that sense, property values can be increased. At the other end, there's plenty of argument to be made that they're not. It really depends on a lot of factors, and I don't know that we have an accurate way of predicting that.
And Blair, what is the status of that 90 apartment unit on the corner clock in Long, just right almost adjacent from it?
I talked with the owner not long ago, and it's mainly just in a holding pattern due to interest rates. And so it's, it's the the financing of it is the issue. The the demand is certainly there. It's whether the financing and the money is there. I I will add that the property immediately to the south of this of this property is already high density residential. It's it's zoned R1, but it's a preexisting nonconforming use. So there are already, there already are apartments directly to the south of this parcel.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, there, there's four of them, I believe, in a little L shape right there.
Are there any other questions I can answer? Or direction that you'd like to give?
Councillors, is there any direction to provide for staff regarding this, or is this is this being tabled? Or has it been worked?
My only question is, if there's no second, then just answers that need to be done, I guess.
Well, we will move on to ordinance spills and point of order, Mayor, would you like to table it for a future meeting for consideration?
That's what I was trying to ask.
Okay.
If someone could.
Or is this something that the council would like to table until further information is provided? And if so, what kind of information would that be?
I think we just wanted it to die.
Madam Mayor, I I understand all the concerns. I really do. The kids that are going to be going to school are going to be going to somebody's school, whether it's on that property or somebody else's property. So I I I guess I'm kind of a little bit on the fence there, but but it's it's if they're going to appeal it, it's probably probably going to lose, I'd be my guess, if they don't, if they don't meet it. if they're going to appeal it, it's probably, probably going to lose, I'd be my guess, if they don't, if they don't meet it. So anyway, I guess, I don't know. I don't know. I just, I mean, I'm pretty sure that something will happen there, but maybe not. So.
Moving on to ordinance bills, we have a third reading of ordinance bills. So it's a request for council action, ordinance bill number 17 for 2023, ordinance 1323, granting franchise renewal to Comcast for cable services. Staff report.
This is the time for the third reading, it's done by title only. So if you want me to read it right now, that would be fine.
Yes, please.
Okay. And we did fill in the, it's filled in in your copy in the, in the form. We did fill in the blanks on the last one where we put in the dates and that sort of thing.
Great, thank you.
Okay, ordinance bill number 17 for 2023, ordinance number 1323, an ordinance of the city of Sweet Home granting a franchise to Comcast of Oregon 2, Inc. for the construction and operation of a cable system.
Thank you. Any questions from councillors? There are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance bill number 17 for 2023. Kelsey or Cecily, please take the vote.
Councillor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councillor Thorsten?
Yes.
Councillor Trask?
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes. Let the record show that we have five eyes and two absences. Moving on, reports of committees, any committee reports to come forward today? Madam Mayor, if I may. Yes. Blair said we had a transportation committee, is that what it's called?
Transportation System Plan Public Advisory Committee.
Yeah, it was my first time that I got to go to that and I think it was our first meeting that we had with councillors invited, maybe, maybe not. And I forgot my laptop because we had executive session, but one of the things that was really exciting to me is that they're focusing on Pleasant Valley and Highway 20 and that discussion that we had. So I don't know where it's going to go, but it's pretty exciting to see the changes and for them paying attention to our community.
That's great. Thank you for that report, Councillor Sanchez. Any other committee reports? Okay, moving on, reports of city officials, city managers' report.
I don't have anything to add. I'll only comment that, I'll only comment that Kelsey is, is home and all reports are good at this point. And we do not have a second meeting in December. And I believe the first, the first meeting in January has been canceled. So the fourth Tuesday of January will be our next meeting. And so I wish you all a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Great.
And that's all I've got.
Thank you.
And happy Hanukkah as well, that we're in the midst of right now.
That was top of my list there, Councillor Sanchez. Actually, the top of my list was the parade, well done to the Chamber of Commerce and the City of Sweet Home for their participation. I thought it was a great event. I hope everybody was able to attend. But the second thing on my list is Happy Hanukkah to all of those that are observing this week right now. And I hope you have great celebrations. I hope everybody enjoys a Merry Christmas as well. I think this is a good time to have a break. And so I thank you all for just agreeing to not have one that week. But I also want to make a couple of other announcements. There's the fifth annual Sweet Home Gingerbread Competition this Saturday. And also, I, I don't know if the library director is going to make this announcement, but there's movies at the library for youth. And there's also a Sweet Home Band Concert this Thursday evening. So moving on to department directors' reports, did the library director have anything to share?
Well, you took my thunder. So Wednesdays this month, we're having a holiday movie. All ages are welcome. The movies are either PG or G. Actually, tonight we had our community reads discussion, we'll have another one in the morning. And then we also want to say that we are going, we are a safe space for teens to hang out during their winter break. We just have added a TV and a Nintendo Switch funded by the Friends of the Library. So if you don't have anything else to do, please come by and hang out and play and it's safe and warm and probably not that quiet, but it'll be fun.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Director Swigman.
Just one update for, for council. I talked briefly about the startup of the sludge blend tank, but also the screw press. And so that got started today and, and I will provide you more information on that as we get going. That's really good news for us. We've been waiting to get that up and fired up. Secondly, for about a year and a half, we've been waiting for one pump for the water treatment plant. That arrived last week. Three weeks ago, we witnessed a efficiency test online and, and it, it met all the marks of the design curve. And so it was signed off by engineers and brought on site and we have it on site. And we wanted to put it in right away, but we're going to wait till this event gets out and we have scheduled it for the first, after the first of the year. So just to kind of give you a heads up on that.
That's exciting news. We've been waiting a long time for that. Thank you for sharing that. Any other directors would like to share anything? Chief?
I would like to say we had a successful shop with a cop on December 2nd. I want to say thank you to the, our staff and volunteers that made that happen as well as all of the other law enforcement agencies that showed up to participate. We had a really good time.
Great. Thank you. Thank you also for the support your department and Director Swigman's department does for the parade. I know that's a lot of extra work, so thank you. Any other?
Madam Mayor, if I may, Mr. Snyder just reminded me, typically in our past pack, practice has had, has been to have the council vote on meeting cancellations. And so I informed you of the proposed cancellations, but did not ask you for your vote on approving those. So if you wouldn't mind.
We'll take a vote on that as well. All right. So Cecily, would you take a vote on that option?
Councillor Thorsten?
Yes.
Councillor Trask?
Oh, sure.
Pro Tem Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
And Councillor Sanchez.
Absolutely.
That's five eyes and two absences.
Not sure who the motion and second came from.
Motion and second.
So no motion and second on that. All right. Any council business for the good of the order? No? All right. I will adjourn this meeting at 8:09 PM.